For February first, twenty twenty-three to order. On the line, I think we have Dave Castro in the event that we need him. So if we want to go through public works now so we can.
Do you want any electric cemeteries first?
What's that?
Electric cemeteries on here first?
You have another item on your agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me pull up the.
The collection.
And by the way, Public Works is one thirty-six. If you want to get your paper to it.
Okay, mine. Very helpful.
I got you guys.
I just want to speak.
I tried. I certainly tried. That's my job.
Okay. Uh, item number one, Consider Take Possible Action on our Resolution to Apply for the Neglected Cemetery Cemetery Account Grant Program Authorizing. First selectman, Matthew Lloyd, Dr. Bob Self in the third person. To enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant should the town be selected for a grant award. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
This is, I believe, the third or fourth of these grants that we've got. I've worked closely, it goes back to working with Carl Ballistraci, Joel Heelander, and Tracy Thomaselli. This is a state program that allows for grants of up to six thousand dollars to repair neglected cemeteries. Only those cemeteries that do not have an active association, so some of these are historical, the smallpox cemeteries, the one that we did recently, last one we did. So they've identified another one, Joel and Tracy have identified another one, but they're going to replace, repair a dozen broken headstones. So there are some longstanding family names that we'd all recognize. So that, anybody have any questions or?
You know, I'll handle that.
Is Karen on the line?
That's all right.
I can. Which cemetery are they? It's really what we're asking.
Bluffhead.
Say that again?
Bluffhead Cemetery in North Guilford. Bluffhead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll send you along the trail, I wonder. Okay. Now, you know what, field trip. There you go. Actually, speaking of field trips, this one, myself, I have to do a, I have to do that. Yeah, Peggy lines and I talked about that last week at a cog meeting. So we're going to try to do it, and we schedule it, if anybody wants to go, please be happy to have.
Perambulate.
We got.
Yeah.
And then, and then there's a, there's a stone, there's a stone at the corner where the first selectmen are supposed to engrave their name, etch their name. So.
I didn't know about the etching.
Yeah, so actually, Bill Bloss is one of them.
Goes to once a year, walk.
Yeah, I think that's in the state statutes or something.
I was thinking about asking it.
Good little, just fantastic.
When I was first selecting, we did that, we did it with Milford one time, just to historical purposes.
Right.
Yeah.
Did you etch your name?
No, there's no etching.
People in Trafford.
The mayor of Milford, I walked the border and had pictures taken, that's about it.
So it's the whole, the whole border of?
No.
No. Up for days.
I'm not going to whether it's short or long, but I just wondered with.
We'll have a GoPro and we'll.
All right.
Give you the experience. Okay, if there are any, no other.
Of all that?
Yeah. Yeah, we took the left turn, huh? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for putting me back on track, yeah. All right, item two is discuss and take possible action. So Dave Castro is on the line, so why don't we pop over to, what is it, one thirty-six?
One thirty-six.
Thirty-six, program number one.
I'm putting back pages. The one that I printed is.
All right, MJ, highlight the changes, please.
I do, I have two, two adjustments, Dave, that we, and the board that we've made. We did a real thorough review of the fuel line. And at sixty thousand is indeed a four-year average. The, the number that Dave did is not incorrect, except that we needed to net out some of the items that go to the other departments use. So the only, so we put in sixty thousand at the moment that really doesn't address the jump in fuel prices, however. So we leave it at sixty, make it a little high, you know what I mean? It's a four-year average, it's not, it doesn't. Address.
Might work out in our favor with the lack of.
Yeah, don't say that word.
No, my goodness.
But you know, like.
Yes. But, so, so that's the first item.
It was just gas, right? It's just gasoline? So, so that, so that number actually has gone down since the high in the summer, right? So maybe this could be right.
Yeah, but we're locked in at a price.
We were already locked in?
We're already locked in for July one.
That's a thing, we give you authority to make that one-day deal.
Yes.
Have an hour to make the decision.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a future contract.
Correct. We actually got a very good price.
As of July.
At the time we got it, the prices were much higher than the price we were quoted, so we actually did well. We expected to come in over three and we came in under three, so.
Goodness knows what this next summer is going to bring. I mean, prices will go back up, we're locked in until July.
We're locked in, we're, no, we're locked in, these prices are for July one twenty-three to June thirty twenty-four.
Yeah, and in July we go to the ten.
I didn't know which July we're talking about, so.
So we locked in a quantity of gallons as well.
Yes.
So are the gallons numbers that were used in budgeting that same number basically?
Yes, correct.
Right, so we're stuck.
We're in the stock and or?
Well, it all depends. It all depends on charges.
Yeah, quite honestly, last December of twenty-one, we locked in at significantly lower prices. And so we won, you know, we won over that period of time because it does run into effect in July.
Insurance. Right, so that's.
The other thing is we're slowly getting away from the Crown Victoria, so maybe we've got some savings there.
That's true. Yeah.
So anyways, that's the change in that. And.
And we also cut twenty, it looks like, in replacement salaries.
Um, one thirty-six, are you in the right place? They don't have replacement, they don't have replacement salaries.
I'm glad the service is on the other end.
Dave's thinking, wow, I'm getting another line item. Um, so any other questions on fuel before I go over the next line? Okay, so under contracted services, this is where we, we move the materials management. From capital into the operating. Dave, could you give a little brief overview of what that materials management money will be used for?
The materials management money would be used to clean up the stump dump. Uh, there's a lot of material there that we need to haul out. Um, we're way overextended on our permit for the stump dump. So I'm trying to avoid penalties for the town in the future by cleaning that up and paying a contractor to remove all that hazardous material. Over a stretch of four to five years.
Yeah, so Dave, over four or five years, we anticipate seeing this number revert?
Uh, for four or five years, yes, and then after that, hopefully, the number will be substantially lower because we will just manage what we do for the year. Right now, we're playing catch-up for all the years prior.
Got it.
By hazardous material, I hope you really mean potentially hazards, right? This is like broken pavement and that type of stuff?
Right, potentially hazardous material, whatever, we've taken broken pavement, stuff, we've slept off the road, stuff from the catch basin, cleaning, all of that stuff.
Okay, that's right. I mean, that's natural.
Naturally occurring hazard.
I'm not sure I understood, is this going to be every year for the next four or five years, or is it going to be again in four?
Every year, every year for four or five years, and then once it's cleaned up and it get all of our approvals, then it'll come down into just a regular maintenance.
Okay, so, and that's the additional forty is about what the amount is for each year?
Yes. It wasn't capital, and during our capital deliberations, if you remember, we discussed moving that into operating, so that's what we've done here.
Got it, thank you. So you added money in that?
Correct, because I reduced the capital budget and I increased the public works budget for the same amount.
So why does it look like it went down ten times? What am I looking at?
Because, um, because of fuel. Yes, because the page before, fuel went down over here, that was the first item we talked about.
I got it, I was thinking.
Overall, right, overall, oh, yeah.
Oh, got it.
Overall, yeah.
Well, while Dave's here, and at the risk. I gotta ask about the overtime thing, I mean, obviously, we've been extremely lucky. And I'm looking at the actual of what we've expended so far this year, that's the sixteen, right?
Yeah, through what, through January sixteenth. My moment of time.
I just, and it's possible for Dave because he wasn't here last year, but I'm just wondering. Although, wait, this is for next year, this is for the rest of this year, okay.
Right, so their three-year average is eighty-seven, the year before was one, you know.
But the biggest thing is it's for next year.
Right.
I mean, if anything, hopefully, we can see.
Right, we currently have a hundred thousand dollar budget this year, so he's leaving it flat.
In some years, it's been over a hundred.
Yes.
No, I, yeah, my thinking was that we're over halfway through and, you know, good luck, but that's not the numbers. Then we're looking at what's going to happen next year.
Don't forget, it's not, it's not just the hours of overtime, the salaries are increasing, so that's going to put more pressure on the number, whatever it is. I think, you know, three-year average of a hundred thousand is probably appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, I was.
Yeah, good point, Mitch, good point.
And there's nothing to say that at the end of the year, if there's an empty surplus in that, that we couldn't reserve, that couldn't reserve account for some projects, public works projects, like the balance of the thirty, the cleanup materials management.
Sure, absolutely. Got lots of options at the end of the year, yeah.
Always trees. Everybody's going to contribute to Kevin's budget. Speaking of that, I had, I had Kevin and Kevin and. Dave Castro, oh yeah, absolutely.
I think the communication is good, no matter what you thought of it.
This was, this is related to a sidebar conversation Charles had with Kevin McGee about the bucket truck, Kevin saying it doesn't fully meet his needs. Well, it doesn't, but it's a forty-five-foot boom. Dave, you want, Dave, you want to talk to that?
I was more concerned that they were talking to each other.
That's right. Go ahead. Dave, you want to talk about the, how, how that, that went with you and Kevin about the bucket truck?
Yes, sir, I talked to Kevin McGee about it, we're going to, he has forms in V O C right now that he uses. Um, I did tell him that, you know, with the bucket being forty-five feet, we can't do all of Kevin's trees. If we did, we would need to hire more staff because there's so many of them. But because of the size of the truck, we can get down a lot of the smaller roads, we can do a lot more maintenance than we're doing right now with the trees, and there are quite a few takedowns that we can do. He was in agreeance, he actually brought up a good point of maybe appointing two people in our crew to be deputy tree wardens who would be able to help him mark the trees. Uh, he would teach them how to find the boundaries of the trees as to what's the town, what's, what's the homeowners, and then. In V O C, we would create a forum where my guys would input information for him, and if there's something that they can't do, he would know, and he'd be able to have a contractor come in and do it.
Great, that's exactly what I was hoping for, to increase the lines of communication, so it sounds perfect, so good.
I do have a question about this, I brought up the suggestion several years ago that we look into investing in a bucket truck when the tree expense started to go up, and I was told that a big reason for not doing it was injuries more risk top. Is that not a factor at this point?
It's always a factor, we, we, you know, we've had a traumatic injury with, with a tree limb falling on an employee who's now, you know, permanently disabled, so. There's always, there's always danger with the trees, but we also have, Dave, you've got at least one person on your, on your staff who's a tree surgeon certified or something like that? Arborist, thank you.
I have a licensed arborist, and I have one guy who was a licensed arborist, and he let his license last, but he's still here. They're both really knowledgeable, and I'm sending them to every piece of training I can, not just them, but, you know, I have five designated guys. We're going to bucket training already, the whole crew CPR certified, we're going to be completely safe with what we do for the town.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, anything further? Dave, thank you very much, you're free to get back to your regularly scheduled programming.
All right, thank you.
All right. Very good. Okay. Um. Right at the top, there you go, we made a couple of adjustments there, and I'll actually talk to this. The. My part.
You go right ahead.
Hold on, couldn't be told, Karen does the work.
Really?
Pull this together.
That's like.
You'll see, highlighting a couple of changes. One of them nominal on the office, office, posted rather, but that was as a result of what we heard of an increase in the assessors' budget. For, because the mailing is going to be done by an outside firm. So that'll show up essentially right in another month. It's already somewhere else. But possibly save it from here. Exactly. Rather than leave it as. And then the part-time salaries, public information, that is the G C T V videotaping, which, as I think we've come to learn. Uh, we've been able to engage the community and do it in a different fashion. This reflects the fact that Mike is, Graziano, is still doing the word of finances meeting, so, right? Uh, so I don't, we don't know, we don't know if that is going to continue, that's sort of at the whim of the chair. But there we have, working with G C T V. Put in some equipment that would allow for live streaming to their facility as well as to YouTube. Um, whilst the Zoom meeting is also, so this could create another opportunity for folks to continue to watch it. Uh, and then G C T V would be able to tape it and then, you know, from their own location, having Mike there, so, so, so that, that number may well go away, but at this point, it's dropped. What is code maintenance again? That is the town code ordinances, the charter and code. So you know, you want to go on the town website and see what's left, sort of the extent of this. Is that just sort of a license fee to maintain that? No, it's for updates, it's for annual updates, every time we pass an ordinance or, you know, or change something, the code, the foot, the code has to be updated.
And I think it's also the legal fees to put that in the paper. Legal for the codes, no, maybe not.
No, it's, no, no, it's just for the code book updates, and then, yeah, and also that line, I think, is the laser fish, which is how we can search. Any of the minutes that are online, or, yeah, that are on the laser fish program.
Okay, so it's.
It's an optical character reader program, so if someone wants minutes from nineteen forty and they have its subject, we can go search for them, so. That's our, our annual fees are in there for that as well.
And we're halfway through the year and we're halfway through the. It's like the previous number, okay, good, awesome.
That, that's just a function of how they bill us, when they bill us annually, so it's when bill hits our books, so.
But there are, there are additional charges whenever the new ordinances get implemented and updated, or is that part of the fee?
Why are we, why are we double the average?
Year-to-date actions, we're at, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm looking at three-year actual average of twenty-eight and change.
I guess it's, it, Karen, it's, it's a function of how many changes we make, right?
Correct, yeah, so if you, if we have a lot of ordinance updates, which we have had in the last couple of years, and.
Zoning rewrite.
Right.
That is doubled.
Yeah, it is, over our three-year average, right? But there will be significantly a number of updates, change, so. All right, anything else in the second? All the dust clears, one point six percent. True. MJ, you're back in charge.
Did you talk, you talked about postings, okay. Uh, we didn't make any adjustments to the town clerk's budget. Um, I will note that it shows an eight-point-three-four percent increase, and maybe Mitch can speak to that because we made some adjustments in people's roles this year. So we're not, so the budget for the current year does not reflect where people are today, so Mitch, if you want to talk about that?
Uh, we had upgraded the, uh, one of the assistant town clerks to a deputy town clerk. So we have a hierarchy of town clerk, deputy town clerk, assistant town clerk, based on the duties that are being performed by one of the individuals who's been here several years, doing an excellent job. Uh, but also has been able to take on additional work that, that the assistant town clerk position really didn't require, well, didn't require, but he's taken it on, and it's helped out tremendously. We've, we updated the job description and increased the salary commensurate there.
This is also a retention issue, based on some of the salary numbers, let's, let's, let's talk about what that salary number is versus what it was.
Well, it's, um, it's forty-eight thousand now, which was about thirty-seven thousand. Um, and, you know, it's got the increase that's in this year's budget for two and a half percent for the contract. So anyways, it's a retention issue, it's also a, just an acknowledgement of the increased duties at the town clerk's office and the amount of work that's being done down there, one individual stepping up, doing a lot of the computer work, especially.
Thank you.
So the percentage, it's, it's why I have that FY twenty-three budget highlighted red, because it's, it's, it's not a true representation of where we stand today, so the eight point, the eight percent reflects that.
So it's fifteen thousand dollars roughly in that one line item, that's the only change.
Yeah, yeah.
What's going on with office supply? It's really worth a dollar, though.
Well, that's, that's inflation stuff, they should, cost of everything, this.
Oh, that was, yeah, we talked about their.
Sorry, I'm in the wrong department again. Think I know how this thing looks now, a shredder, we talked about, a shredder. That was the reason for the increase, because of last time.
Yes, because they, um, they spend a lot of time on the second floor, because the shredder is on this level, so they spend a lot of time up and down coming from a shredder, so it would be a productivity saver to have that available in their office.
Certainly not the whole six hundred hour increase, so this is the shredder, that's awesome.
Yes. Questions on town clerk? Uh, next is finance. Pretty much the same, you didn't make any changes. Just note that.
Some money in reserve.
There's some money in reserve for me, um, which, which clearly wouldn't bring that percentage up much, but, but so be it.
It was five dollars.
Yeah, what's five dollars here, amongst friends?
You're negotiating this?
We'll take him out first. And then out for drugs, no. But, um, other, other than that, if there's any questions. We will be going back out to bid for audit services soon because our five years is coming to an end.
Damn.
Yeah. And I'm going to tell you, it's not going to be pretty. Any other questions there?
I'm good there.
All right, next is human resources.
Of course, of course. Unless you want to talk about your revenue stream.
Oh, I certainly talked about revenue, so I didn't print out the revenue, so I had, when I presented my budget to you guys, I put in a three hundred thousand dollar revenue budget, being a little bit conservative. Currently at almost three hundred and fifty, um, as of January, so I bumped that up to five hundred. Um, hoping, we are working on some other investments that will hopefully keep us at that point. Um, but if we continue where we are today, you know, we're looking at seven hundred thousand. Um, so I bumped that up to five, I, two reasons, one, because I think I can obtain, obtain it, and two, I figured the board of finance, who would do that anyway? Um, I, I'd be a little bit leery going higher than five, not knowing where things are going to go. And, you know, I, I had that much of a budget or more before that, so, anyway, I'm helping on the revenue side.
Thank you.
Now on to Mitch, human resources, we didn't make any changes there. Do you have any questions of Mitch?
Also. Yeah, it's also. Well, education, training. And for Miss Susan's.
Uh, so the next is I T, um, so I made a change to software licensing and support. I accidentally, well, I was, I was asked a question at a board of finance meeting, um, which led me to discuss a new product called debt book. Um, which. It's, it's a thirteen thousand dollar product, it would manage all of our debt. Similarly to how we do it manually now, um, but in a much, you know, much better product than my Excel spreadsheets. Um, but the real reason I presented it to the board of finance inadvertently that night, without speaking to Matt first, because I had just had that demo that day. We have two new G A S B requirements for our audit, one that goes into effect in our twenty-two audit that we're finalizing right now, um, which is adding leases.
Oh.
And it's a huge undertaking, huge, huge.
I've been through it.
Yes, huge, and then for the twenty-three audit, we have to do subscriptions, like microwave, microwave, Microsoft licensing. All those types of subscription services that we get through I T, we have to manage all of those as well, and write notes in our audit, which this program will produce for us. You know, do all, tell me, put together what the journal entries are, um, and after working through leases this year. It's, it's needed, it's going to be, it's not going away, um, so I added in that, but then I reduced the budget by a hundred thousand dollars, which we have in reserve. And up, certainly up for discussion because we have, we have money in reserve, my thought was, we have a significant increase in I T software for things that we've added, that, that you have added through. You know, polling and all that, but specifically the EnerGov program over at Town Hall South, we've been paying for that through the reserve up until now. We put it in our budget because it, as part of the annual software, which is where the three hundred and eleven thousand came from, but my thought was to use some more reserve this year. And smooth, smooth these large increases in over a couple of years instead of going, you know, a thirty-four percent increase. Or you might say, yes, let's just do it, and, you know, rip off the Band-Aid, we could do that as well, um, but, so that's what this does. So the, the, the three eleven becomes three twenty-four with the new. The, the department request of three eleven.
Yes.
Becomes three twenty-four with my new debt book, with the debt book, and, and then, and then, and dropping it down, so you guys can change that amount.
Are you saying that the ripping off of the Band-Aid would cost approximately ninety, or could we do a half of it?
Well, the, the full Band-Aid would be the thirty-four point seven one percent plus another thirteen thousand. So thirteen thousand into my.
Good point, Charles, you know, the, just, we, we'll be having the same conversation next year, right?
Well, yeah, and this might be the year when we want to take advantage of some of those.
Yeah, if I add the thirteen thousand into the department request, I'm at thirty-eight percent increase.
Well, I know, but we don't have to do the whole.
No. Correct, that's why I'm saying, I just.
Pick the number, so.
I just arbitrarily.
My question was, is, is that, would that be the full Band-Aid or is that? Mostly Band-Aid.
Well, it would go from our current budget of a hundred and eighty thousand up to two twenty-four, and then, you know, it's, it's probably more than half the, it's, it is more than half the Band-Aid.
So, so the, so the, so the Band-Aid itself is really the difference between twenty-three revised budget of one eighty and the, which would have been two thirty-four.
Right.
Right, so, um, that's, that's a hundred and. Right. So, um, that's, that's a hundred and a half. This doesn't take the whole Band-Aid off. It takes the thirds of it at this point. But we're gonna be.
It's a number to keep in mind, a little later in the process.
Right, you know, maybe we take fifty or we take zero, or, you know, depending on where the numbers fall at the end of it, you know. It, it was, it's really just a suggestion of something to look at as you're going through budget.
And this is software at Town Hall South. It's up and running. It's in process. They're bringing it up to speed.
We're bringing it online.
Okay, so people will see a smoother process, more automated process down there.
Well, Microsoft.
You know, I'm just saying, we're not spending money because we feel like it. There's a productivity.
Well, not only that, but, you know, we're just changing the time that we're spending.
I know, I understand your point. Your, 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 your points are great.
You're talking about value.
I'm talking about the value side of this. There's a lot of money.
I'm assuming the value side are.
Yeah. But just so some folks have an idea of what it is we're doing and why.
Uh, to give you an idea, that particular program is seventy-eight thousand a year.
I was disappointed over there that, uh, I, I guess this isn't the end of it. But I just thought that all of the conversion was further along than I led to believe at the hearing.
And I, I had a conversation with, uh, Tuesday, um, with the Town Hall South staff in the regular meeting. That's one of the things I brought up is, we need to get a handle on where we're.
Yeah, we thought we worked, yeah.
So, uh.
We were, so no one had come back to say we weren't done, so we thought we were done.
We're gonna put the Tony, Tony's out. A little time for, so, anyway. Should be talking about that, right? Um, when he gets back, um, we're gonna meet with Tony, Kevin, uh, and the other departments over there to get a handle on what.
What needs to be done. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely want that.
Yeah, we're doing so much uh, updating.
Yeah, and you know, I, I, I didn't ask the question, and I guess I should have asked the question. But when the project completed, I, nobody said anything, so I, I, um, inappropriately assumed we were okay, so.
This is the conversion project we're talking about?
Yeah, the scanning of all of the old documents in, so that.
Well, it sort of came out with the waste, um, water pollution control thing that those sent there.
What came out for me when they were talking about the struggles with the permitting process. To me, you know, all of the effort we've been putting in over there, uh, I was assuming it was going to streamline the permitting process where the folks could effectively.
That's the, that's the goal.
It's the goal, but I, you know, I was just assuming that we were.
Yeah, well, part of that whole project, it's a larger project than, you know, we're, we're putting a, a, we have a computer for access resident, access that you could go to the, to Town Hall South and pull up your own documents. But we need to make sure all the documents are in there. So that's the scanning part of it.
What I struggled with is during the hearings, they were saying that uh, the process, you know, to me, the process for building permit frankly ought to be, you know, a checkoff thing. And if everything's checked off, you get a permit. If everything's not checked off, you keep checking things off. Uh, and the impression I got was there was a lot of gray areas where things were discussed.
Well, I, I think the issue is the software can't make an objective.
No, but the software could make the research, to me, a lot of it. I mean, if it's research is, you know, is there a septic tank? Is it in the right place? That, that's a mechanical thing, which, you know, yes, there will always be worms. I understand that. Okay? But a high percentage of, of information could be on there someday. So that, you know, if you want to permit to build a shed, is it a certain distance from the boundary? Is it, you know, da, 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 and you check them off and they're done.
Maybe in the future, but we don't have that capability.
But that's, that, that's what this is designed to do. It's to streamline, it's a paper intensive process, which goes from your desk to your desk to your desk to your desk. An automated process where, uh, and, and by the way, just the, the way this, the system works, somebody comes in to pull a building permit. It's not as simple as saying, I just want to build a deck. Right? It needs to be a review, planning is only, needs to do a review of it to see if it's appropriate in that, in that area. If, you know, what this needs to take a look at and see, make sure it's uh, inside, outside of a hundred year, a hundred year, a hundred foot up and review. Um, health has to take a look at it to see if that's gonna infringe upon uh, something. So that's the process that happens manually.
But all of those, to my mind, should take place after requirements of that. And that's what a program can do. You know, we're, we're getting sidetracked. But to me, that's what a program can do. When you have a set of requirements, which we're redoing, they're plugged in. You, you, your application plugs into that requirement list. Either meets requirements or it doesn't, and then it goes to those review processes.
Yeah, the, the challenges, those systems, the, the system does not have, it does have GIS back. And that's the tool they use, the, the department uses. There, there's, there's associated tools with this software, which is linked to GIS and all of our mapping, that they use to actually look at it. The system itself does not, does not, uh, say, okay, the tech that Matt Boy wants to put on, uh, where is it? Uh, you know, he's, all he wants to do is put on a deck. There aren't gonna be architectural drawings. There's not gonna be an A two survey that comes with a deck.
No, but the question you're asked, is it X numbers of feet from the boundary? Is it X numbers of square feet? And, and the program will say, that's permitted in this zone. That's permitted in this zone. No, it's not permitted. So you fix.
I don't think we're gonna solve that year.
My, my only. That, that's the end, that's the end value proposition that we're shooting for. Something more efficient than.
Something closer.
An easier, who are very useful, the residents to use and access the system. So, and not only residents, but contractors, as you critically well know.
Budget question on this. Do you know where this leaves us with the reserve? If we do continue to fund the sound of the reserve? Or do we have enough in the reserve for the upcoming projects that you're?
I had somewhere around two hundred thousand, give or take. So I took about half of it. And assuming that this, you know, we get in the budget the following year, then, you know, I was.
Okay. Well, that's, that's something we can go back to.
Correct, yeah, absolutely. All recommendations, obviously. Any other questions on IT? Uh, the next is insurance. And Mitch is here. I'll tell you what we did. Um, under claim deductibles, uh, we did a three-year average instead of the normal twenty thousand dollars that we do every year. And, uh, we removed, um, the Karma distribution of equity, um, since we're not using Karma. Totally my oversight for, for not having that click in my head when we, when we put the budget together. Um, so Mitch is here, obviously, can answer any of your questions.
The only I'll say is you see the big, the big increase in the miscellaneous insurance, and I'm hoping that's enough. What happens is there's, there's been, there's been items that Karma would include in our total overall, uh, mostly the lab policy that our current agent does not cover in their lab policy. So we have to get separate insurance for it. The overall savings is still very much there, as you can see. Um, we just continuously find little things we're getting built for. They add up. I think the eighty-two thousand will be enough. Um, but there's, there's also been increases, substantially increases in certain other insurances as well. The natural.
You see, the largest savings, obviously, is moving our workers' comp to carrier.
Mitch, just, this little stuff, when, when we switched vendors, when we went out to bid, did we, did the bid disclose that, the responses disclosed that there were certain things that weren't covered?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
The, the issue has been, there's been Seager going out and quoting those, actually getting the actual quotes now have been in some case, not all cases. In some cases, higher than we, we thought it would be. It, we did okay this past year. The first year was all, remember, we've already been through, we're looking at the second year of the contract now. So the first year, all locked in, you know, what they quoted us. Now we're looking at the second year going out and, uh, you know, there's been increases in some of those miscellaneous insurances that have been more substantial than we expected, that I expected, so.
But the reality, the, 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 the crux of this process that we did about the bid and resulting in leaving Karma, it's workers' comp. Take a look at that number. That's, that's, that's the number. That's where the savings went.
And that's not self-insured? That's commercial?
Is there any concern that that could just be the first time come on?
Well, we're the second year.
Oh, this is the, oh, this is the second, the second year. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, we had savings in the current year after the budget had already been passed.
Right. Which is, does, doesn't reflect in the budget.
I always felt it was so based on experience and surprise.
It is. It's based on a lot of things, um, but, you know, we've, we're going out, it's a competitive market. And, um, uh, we've put in safety, you know, protocol that, you know, we're certainly hoping that it will, uh, put things forward that will help. Uh, Travelers has a different way of doing things. They're a little bit more rigid than, than Karma was. But, you know, Karen and I have been adjusting to those things and, uh, so there's been more. I like, the word is paperwork, but it's not really paper all the time. It's a lot, a lot of, um, electronic, uh, communication back and forth with Travelers. They're a little tougher, um, but I think it's gonna be fine.
So in the current year, you think we're not gonna need the whole seven fifty?
Oh, no, no.
Right, so we, we spent three forty-five, but we've paid the Karma. Uh, not, we paid the workers' comp.
Oh, far more than half the year.
Already, yes.
Free months.
Oh, whole year?
Uh, it's three, three quarters.
Yep, got it. Okay, all right. I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I think I mentioned that we had the, um, a bunch of presentations. This was a very, it was the right thing to do. It was a difficult thing to do because we've been a longstanding member of Karma, Karma, and CCM Karma, which is the, you know, uh, our CCM organizations, uh, captive insurance, it's not cap, it's a mutual.
Mutual, so, yeah.
And I was, I, I was, I was vice chair. But, you know, the, the, it was nearly three hundred thousand dollar difference all in, minus the seventy-five thousand that we had been getting in today. So, uh, it was, it was the right thing to do. All right.
Okay, next up is registrar of voters. The only, I, I didn't make any changes. Uh, the only thing I would like to throw out is the possibilities of using some ARPA funds to cover the increase in poll workers. We've done that the past couple of years. Um, I did not make that adjustment, however, just bringing that up as discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that, um, this upcoming budget is gonna be impacted as much by ARPA as, as in past years. The, um, the other thing that I think we need to be conscious of is the fact that the legislature is, uh, is going to enact, um, extended voting, early, early voting. So that's gonna have an impact. You know, the, 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 the discussions up there are anywhere from, you know, five to twenty days of, of, uh, early voting.
Are they gonna have to open every polling place or?
That, that's to be determined in the legislation. The, the conversations are largely around, uh, having you at your town at, at a single location. So you don't have to staff and be at multiple places.
There may be some, I, I think, I've been trying to follow this as well, um, as a moderator. Um, but, but Matt's correct. I think, um, the other thing that they've talked about though is, is extending hours. So it may include some weekend hours, some nighttime hours, that people are able to vote outside of just coming to Town Hall between three and four-thirty. So there, there, there is some pressures there for especially salaries. Um, we also don't know if the state's gonna do some funding, at least in the first year on that too. It's been talked about as well, you know, you know, the state's very cognizant of unfunded mandates. This would obviously be one. So I think at least the first year, there might be some, some relief, but we don't know yet. It's still in the process.
The state is also faced with a critical, uh, issue around the machines.
Yep.
Those are all.
The machine, machines are at the end of life pretty much anyway, whether we've been the early voter or not. That's a whole nother.
That, that is something that's been funded by the state in the past. They provided those, so. Something gets wrapped up in a singular bill that replaces equipment also.
I mean, the idea that they would have different voting machines in different districts inside one state besides. I mean, it makes a ton of sense for the state to have a single system.
Like, you try your bi logic to.
All right, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I just came out.
But, 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 you know, the reality of that happening as far as the machines in, in the next so many months, down to November.
No, no, not that.
So I mean, yeah, so.
Just one thing to note, um, part-time, the, the part-time salaries, which cover the two registrars, is flat. With board of finance, the way, uh, salaries, they miss the window typically. Uh, the window is the, uh, prior to an election, uh, elected official salaries are set. If you recall, that was done for this board prior to the two thousand, uh, twenty-one election. Uh, and it should have been done prior to the twenty-two election last year, but it was not done. Uh, so they are currently looking at, uh, advising it. So you have some money in reserve personnel in there for that.
Moving on. Any other questions on registrar voters? Okay, we're gonna move to legal. Um, legal had significant increase, obviously, those are the places that I was looking. Um, under general legal expense, um, we have a prior year purchase order, um, that has money in it. So I reduced that by twenty-seven point five thousand, um, in this year so that we can use a portion of that prior year purchase order, um, to help offset that large increase. We added back in the court stenographer based on Pete's presentation, um, when he came to the board. That's four thousand. Um, and under assessment and revow claims, um, we have twenty-one thousand in carried and forced left over from last year in this line. Um, so I reduced the one eighty-eight, um, by that. I will note that we, we decided not to use the revow money, correct?
Right.
Right, okay. So that was reduced, um, by money that we have. So, so the general legal and the assessment claims were reduced by money that I currently have set aside for those purposes. Bringing that, um, down to thirty-four point three five percent.
Only comment, I'm, I'm gonna make a same comment, admit, Pete was here, that, uh, I appreciate that in the, the revow, there are certain mechanical things where you have to respond or appeals or whatever, but, uh, and I know we've been doing it in the past and I, I'd like to make sure it continues there. We, we look at each appeal individually for its cost benefit. I don't wanna spend more money on legal than it is.
And that's part of the normal process, uh, the assessor and the, uh, our legal, our legal team, uh, work together. Determine how far we're gonna push some of them. As I, you know, like, I think, uh, you know, as, as was talked about when Pete was here. We don't wanna have a reputation of filing an appeal here, I'm gonna get it, because they don't wanna pay legal fees. And that's, that's that cost benefit.
That is also some built-in, there's also some built-in check and balance with the outside counsel. I mean, you know, they're, they're not gonna stick with a case that's problematic and end up getting a whole string of losses. The alternative is, they have one they can prove, you know what I mean? There's some, the incentive is in place on the outside end for them to kind of.
Make sure that we do, take a look at, because I remember way back, there were some that we had spent years going through the process and we said, you know, spend fifty thousand dollars in legal for a ten thousand dollar settlement.
Right. There, there, there were some of these cases that fifty thousand dollars is the tax differential. Tax bill differential there. Some, you can well imagine, some of these, they're, they're more expensive properties in the three, four billion dollar range. Um, generates a lot of money. Taxes, look at them individually. So I was encouraged in discussions, and again, I, I shared with you guys the, the revow document. Um, I was encouraged. Becky, uh, has indicated that they've been tracking, um, uh, sales data since the new numbers were applied. And on the properties that have turned over, the numbers are, are dead right. They're, 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 they're right in range. So, um, that goes to the point that when you do an appeal, they look at comps. And if the comps are all, she's, it's a solid, particularly for the houses that have sold. Becky thinks there's some, that we're, we're in a good place with that.
And, and the bottom line is, next year and certainly the year after, that, that expense will drop.
Yeah, we've got, there's a classic bell curve, right? Uh, the year before the, the revow, it's usually the lowest, uh, year. Year, uh, the year of, that, that it first gets implemented, it peaks and it just gradually drops again. So if you go back to twenty twenty, right? Um, look at the, look at the, uh, the amount we spent for, uh, assessment, revow claims, hundred thousand, it dropped consistently down over a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so this is, this is the ramp up here. And, and I think what's, what's interesting is you take a look at twenty twenty actuals versus, uh, what we're actually budgeting, uh, it's less than what we had in twenty twenty. And in, in that was some, uh, reconstituting of the whole legal team from Pam, Nolan, the left, and we brought Pete in. Uh, a, a part-time base as a part-time guy as opposed to fall outside the overall.
While we're on that note, I'd just like to express my thanks and compliments to you and all the changes going on in that department to get that kind of information timely basis. Seems to be earlier than we know. Or at least I, with all the changes going on in struggles.
Jen Ash, Barbara Hamlin, who were, uh, uh, who've been there for some time, have provided great assistance to Becky.
Chris, I think just with all of that turmoil, to still get a timely basis is, is great.
Did a great job.
Okay, are we done with legal?
Back to you.
Okay, um, so I, I'm noticing I'm missing a couple of blue marks, but, um, so I'm gonna talk about engineering and building kind of together. And I'm gonna let Mitch talk because we've added in an overtime line to both of them that were not in the original presentation. So Mitch.
Sure. You heard the discussion in the, uh, budget presentations about the need for additional hours per week, um, for the admins over Town Hall South. Uh, two were addressed, two were not addressed. The two that were not addressed were because the department heads felt the money was, thought the money was already there because those two people have been working the time since, since, at least since past July, they've been doing a forty-hour week. And I never, we never had it in the budget. It was done to keep up with the, the demand over there. So we're trying to, you know, put to paper what's actually happening over there. So starting with engineering, engineering is the easy one. They get harder as you go along. Um, engineering is just to add five hours a week for the admin, which comes out to, uh, fifty-one, fifty-eight, fifty-five, eighteen, excuse me, fifty-five. I have fifty-one, fifty-seven. A different number.
Fifty-five, eighteen.
I have fifty-one, fifty-seven. All right. Do I, do I do it wrong?
Um.
But just.
Either way, I have fifty-five, eighteen.
You got it. I'm, I'm wrong on my letter to everybody.
Oh, sorry. I just, I just want, could you explain that that's not really overtime?
It's not overtime.
Right, it's straight time, straight time. Anything that's, um, any hours that are worked prior, uh, prior to forty hours a week are straight time. So these employees are all currently thirty-five hour week employees. So what we're planning for here is five hours a week, up to five hours a week of additional time, which the only way to put it in is, is called overtime, but it's not time and a half.
It's paid at the, it's paid at the rate.
Same rate effect, yes.
And what, what you see, what you see, what you see here is a conscious decision to not move people to forty hours a week, which, so this is not guaranteed, right? If they work it, they get paid. Uh, it is not a guarantee, uh, forty.
The permits slow down.
And that, that includes, um, their vacation pay, right? So if typically vacation pay, if you are a forty-hour employee, would remain flat. If you're, if you're taking a week's vacation, you're not working overtime. So this is, this is basically to accommodate surges, right? And again, while there's a strong likelihood that a lot or most of that will get used, that doesn't necessarily mean it will.
Right.
Do we think this is surges?
I think, I think it's, it's, it's becoming consistent. And that's, and that's what you saw in the presentation from the, the department heads over there, so. And, and some of the numbers bear it out. The number of permits, uh, that, that are going through there are just crazy. And we've seen, you know, corresponding rise in, uh, in permit fees on the revenue side of it, so, you know, there's a counterbalance. MJ actually has a nice little table at the end that shows the, uh, uh, the, the changes in our local revenues versus our expenditures. And the number that, uh, as I recall from the other day, that we look at probably right here, right? You know, there's a, we have a three, we have a three percent increase. But once you add in the additional revenue streams that are coming through, it's like two point two percent, so. It's a net number.
So that, that's why you're not, the bottom line is, you're not reflecting, since it's not a six number, you don't, you don't wanna reflect it in the full-time salary line.
Correct.
You wouldn't have it at this place.
Yeah.
Your payment not get used.
As Matt, as Matt said, um, at least as the HR director, my recommendation is not to make these people forty hours a week. Because it does create additional benefit, uh, costs. It also, as we said, this could be cyclical. If it becomes permanent in the next couple of budget years, we'll figure that out. But I think for the, for right now, I think it's, it's appropriate just to put up to five hours a week for additional time.
Yep.
The other thing to keep in the back of my mind, which I was gonna bring up later in the discussion, was the, uh, contingency discussion. Itemized versus totally total bucket, yeah, okay.
So anyway, that's the only change we made to engineering, obviously bringing that one up, but the change. Um, so in the building department, um, again, same story with overtime.
Sorry, just that.
Go ahead.
So, so in building, we've got a couple of things going on with the, with the salaries. Um, the first one is that you heard Kim's presentation about a permit technician, which is one of the reasons why you see a major increase in the full-time salaries. That's a forty thousand dollar increase for that position. And then in the, in the overtime, extra time area, there's fifty-five, eighteen right now. That's for the person that's been, like, just like engineering, has been working these hours continuously right now to keep up. However, what, what I discovered and is in your letter is, which is not in the, in the budget at the moment, is the fact that the permit technician is also expected to be putting in those additional hours as well. A thirty-five hour position, Kim did not put in her budget, the need for the extra five hours there as well. That's an additional fifty-eight hundred hours for that person.
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight flat?
Fifty-seven, ninety-two, eighty.
Fifty-seven, ninety-three, okay.
Yeah. Um, that, that I think we, we probably will need to add, uh, if we add the permit technician, which seems to be a needed position over there. Um, we have to account for that additional time as well.
So at, at the risk of opening the conversation we had a couple of minutes ago, presumably this is a brand-new person come on board. Before they get started, they're gonna completely know the software that we have in place. They're not gonna sort of learn the old way and then have to change six months from now.
No, because we're, we're not actually utilizing the software at this point.
Just thought I'd give it a shot.
Thank you. Wow. I think one of the things we want to take a look at, uh, as we just mentioned a, a moment ago about, uh, revenues, the revenues in the, for building department are anticipating to go from a budgeted number of six eighty-five for the current fiscal year to seven fifty. So those incremental labor costs are being lowered by, uh, the projected increase increase of sixty-five thousand, which I think, uh, probably would, would virtually cover that new, uh, technician position.
Just putting this out there, not drawing any conclusions necessarily, but salaries in the building department have tripled. Going from two thousand twenty actuals, rolling forward four years later. We, the fees have not quite doubled. Just, just an observation.
You, you're referring to the part-time salaries, Jim, right?
I'm referring to the combined.
Combined?
Yeah, was there any discussion?
There was no part-time in twenty.
Yeah, but is there any apples and oranges kind of discussion? Um, as far as the share position.
Well, don't, don't forget the part, a good portion of the building department's part-time salaries are the number that we've hired of part-time building officials and beyond, beyond the administrative work. Um, if you go back far enough, we used to have a building official and an assistant building official.
Okay.
And we had for a while there when things were slower, uh, building wasn't going through the roof like it is.
Yeah.
Um, we were able to get away with just a building official and we've now felt the need to bring on the part-time, which has been fairly successful, although we have two openings, uh, which will be advertised this morning, once I'm out of here. Um, for, for filling a couple of, uh, in, in additional part-time. As, as Kim is calling it now, a, a, for right nationally, for a construction building inspector will be the actual uh, term that'll come out this morning looking for, uh, additional help. But that's to replace people that have left and one that was never filled. It's not an easy position to fill.
Yeah.
Because she needs somebody who has either an assistant building official certification or a building official certification. And, you know, there's, there's some retirees out there. There's some people that work forty work weeks elsewhere, uh, but not a lot of people. And so we're, we're out searching, uh, right now.
It doesn't sound like our increase in fees is, uh, committing.
No. And I think one, one thing we wanna recall is, Kim made a presentation. Building codes have changed dramatically over the last couple of years. The number of inspections required uh, for a typical build, uh, a building permit, uh, you know, a, a construction remodeling or, or new construction has changed dramatically. I'll, I'll make sure she gets, but let's, let's make sure that she gives us, uh, the update on that. The number of per, the number of inspections that are now required per permit issue is substantially different than what it had.
All right, any other questions on engineering or building? I guess we'll just note under part-time salaries, we added Michael. We missed Michael.
We did. No, we just, we have a, uh, a couple of part-time people, um, also helping out in, um, in building. Um, we have a, a clerk who, uh, puts in a couple of hours a week. We have a administrative, additional administrative assistant who puts in, who was putting in and has now been, been reduced. Um, so we, we've got a couple of people there. We had a clerk that was missed, uh, which is a uh, twelve thousand hours for the year.
You wanna talk about that individual?
Yeah, it's an individual who, uh, uh, worked, worked with us on a, um, free basis, if you will, um, for a while, uh, a student from Gilford High School that, uh, was in a special program, um, and it worked out very well in my office and in Town Hall South. Um, he aged out of that program at Gilford High School and was looking for a job. And he was, uh, doing a, a night, a good, a very good job over at Town Hall South. We decided to bring him on for several hours a week and it's worked out very well. Very proud to say.
Thank you.
Also, Mitch, it seems like you have a document you're referring to. It's the salaries. It's not just the changes which.
I do. I have, uh, this, this thirty-page, uh, thing that I burden you all with. Um, certainly if there's departments or the whole thing you want, I can certainly.
Let's do it.
Email the whole thing to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Take a look. Absolutely. And that was individual by individual, you know, and their, their, their hourly or their, um, salary rates. And, um, yeah, it give, well, it gives you all the detail of all the salaries that are, that, that Mary Jane has, uh, put in synopsis form here. Absolutely. I'll send that to everyone.
Um, moving on to the assessor. Um, she, uh, we, I didn't make any change, um, although, uh, she had put in part-time salaries for consultant. We, we moved to field work, which is where that line item, um, should be. Um, it, it is a, a significant increase over what we've had in the past. Um, and, uh, my only thought, I, I mean, if, if you were looking for some funding or maybe to smooth this in over two years, putting ten first and then going up to twenty if needed, because right now it's, you know, with the new assessor, I'm not sure. Uh, other than that, I don't have any other comments for this.
If you ask Becky to just do as a paragraph or two as to why this is required. You know, obviously it's something that we had done in the past, basically, uh, bring on, uh, post-do inspections, right, uh, do, to check the validity of, uh.
This is the position she was talking about, the part-time, um.
It's not part-time. This is all contract work.
But yeah, that is the one she was talking about, where they would come in and, okay, do field work.
So, yeah, let's, I think she, in her presentation, she talked a little bit about how many, how many hours, how many visits, it's like, um.
She called him part-time appraiser, part-time assess.
She might.
Appraiser.
Appraisers because.
So this is the position she, all right.
Yes, that is the position. It, um, we wouldn't be hiring an individual, we would, we would be contracting with someone so that
that it produces revenue.
It produces revenue. Correct, it does. Right. Um, again, just a suggestion, um, because of the, looking for every dollar we can here, but I did not make an, any adjustment to that one. Uh, next is Board of Assessment Appeals.
Can we just go back a second?
Yes, of course.
You just talked about this and I missed it, I apologize. There's also another, um, twenty thousand in, in, um, part-time salaries, but you moved that out.
Right, it's now zero.
It just, I see, okay.
Right, it's just moved.
It moved, sorry.
She, she put it in as salaries, but it's already contracted, so it's just moved the line.
The same twenty thousand, just, right, just got it. Okay, sorry.
Yep, and you'll see here the line item, office supplies, um, that is increased. Then I'm assuming Matt and Karen addressed that when they talked about the selectmen's budget.
Yes.
Earlier in the presentation. So this is going up for that and we brought postage down. Any other questions on the assessor? Yeah, okay. Um, Board of Assessment Appeals. Seventy-five dollars. Any comments? Okay, moving on. Um, so the tax collector's budget, uh, in, in similar fashion as we discussed earlier, there is a change in the town clerk's office. We had a change in.
Yeah, we, we had a tax clerk that was part-time. We've moved that to full-time. Uh, kind of worked down there, um, necessitated, we felt necessitated that and it, um, has worked, so far worked out very well.
So that adjustment was made in the current year, but it's not reflected in the budget. So budget to budget is, is not apples or oranges. I mean, it, or it's apples to oranges, not apples to oranges. So that, um, that's what that is. Yep, and then, so the only thing we did is, um, Darlene was starting to put the budget together for publication. She noticed that. Got a pink note. Why haven't you sent that to me? Uh, but that, um, inadvertently the copier, uh, lease for the tax collector's office was missed, so that is added back in.
Just a anecdotal story, uh, Debbie Blount asked me to stop down to see her yesterday. She got an interesting, uh, interaction with a taxpayer who, um, had a delinquent tax bill of thirty-one dollars. Proceeded to rip her up one side, the other side, it's statutory, it's nothing we do, can't wait. Yeah, I pay taxes, I have three kids, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's just, I'm sorry, she came out, so he writes out his check. She processes the check and then she looks at it in the note side. He had written asphalt and, and, and drawn a picture of a hand with the middle finger up. So that's, that, that, that's one of the interactions that they got.
It's gonna be on his permanent record on his bank, so.
I told Deb, Deb had taken a, you know, a photocopy of it and I said, gotta frame that. That was, that, that one oughta go on.
Put it up as a cartoon down.
Anyway.
That's inappropriate. That's the kind of stuff. You can't blow it out of proportion, but boy, yeah.
You know, ninety, ninety-nine percent of the people are decent when they, when they show up from the window. It's the ones that show up after February first that can be problematic, so.
We'll be down there immediately after this meeting. There's nothing in the notes.
What, a big check?
Oh, a big check. Pretty big. Yeah, we. Not, not gently, just well.
Any questions on tax collection?
Yep.
Okay, on, next is planning and zoning. Um, so what Matt and I discussed here, when Jamie made her presentation, she asked for ten thousand dollars in the consultant line. But she admitted during her conversation that she really didn't have a specific use for that. Um, at, at, at this point, she couldn't pinpoint the use for, for that money. Um, we do have reserve funds set aside for planning initiatives and we felt that if something through the year, through, through the fiscal year she needed to do, we could utilize those funds. So we made this zero. Not that she couldn't use the money, but that we would, um, we would consider it being used from the money we have set aside. Bringing her down to a, or another.
In, in addition, this is another spot in Town Hall South with the additional, additional time. Uh, we recently hired a new administrative assistant with the understanding when we hired that person that there would potentially be the extra five hours a week because of the workload there, so that, so far it's working. Because of the workload there, so that so far is working out well, but it's now budgeted. So you see that budget item as well, it's been added.
Right.
I think it probably bears uh talking about a little bit, but the uh the admin assistants also have responsibility for meeting coverage.
Yeah.
And uh planning and zoning is one that uh, I know you sat on that floor at one point and it's rare if they get out of there before ten, ten or ten-thirty. Uh, couple meetings a month, so that we've had, they've had difficulty with these admins being able to actually take the comp time that they're entitled to. On top of vacation.
Right.
And actually scheduling into comp time. So that that overtime is.
Could be part of that part.
Part of them as well.
Now some planning and zoning. Uh zoning Board of Appeals.
A huge increase of. Forty-one percent?
Yeah, which is only three hundred dollars. However, however, you know, they they haven't used much of their budget um over the years. So um.
Wasn't there some training that's required now? Know what that was about?
Yes, yeah. Training is a is a is is part of that, or should be.
The travel, the travel, the training, something.
Which, yeah, it's a small portion of it.
That's.
Yeah, so board members training?
Yes, yes, uh state legislature. Okay, absolutely. Well, and and quite.
Zoning boards as well, I believe.
This this board has recognized that they need training themselves because um they have the history of the zoning board of appeals. As you may well know, uh having served, I think, at one point on that board. Uh and then having appeared before on a couple of cases representing clients. Um, we tend to grant appeals. Appeals are only supposed to occur on legitimate hardships. I mean, granting of them, but what has happened over time is is something like, well, if the neighbor, if the neighbor doesn't care about it, okay. Um, and this is something that's uh being looked at across the state. And a former board member, uh who resigned, Rob Babasor, pointed that out, that he was concerned. He's also an attorney. Uh he stepped down because he was concerned that the board was uh not acting in concert with the state statutes. And was being far too lenient. So he, so he, it was in my office to let me know why he had stepped down. That was, that was the primary reason. Um, we also had some correspondence from a community member relative to. Leniency that this uh zoning board of appeals grants.
So where is, where is the training? Thank you.
It's in the travel line.
Oh, in the travel.
Yeah, we would pay for them to travel to the training.
Yeah, and planning and zoning, if you go back a line to planning and zoning, you'll see that um that was increased on education and training. Um substantially for the same reason.
You will see the this current year's budget, uh because we've already engaged Chuck Andres. Who is uh our uh zoning PNC attorney uh to provide some training. That oversight, but training to the board. So we'll see something in this year's legal budget for Chuck's time.
Anything else on more appeals? Next is uh natural resources. Um so here you'll see um the highlighted twenty-five thousand. Um is brought over from capital during our capital discussions. Kevin requested a Lake Quantapaw Consulting Manager water testing. Um, so we moved that. Into this line instead of capital, uh so that um brings his budget out. And obviously, you know, tree maintenance, but here again, you'll see that same overtime line.
Yes, because this is, this is, this is exactly what Matt was just referring to. Uh Kevin's real need for um the overtime was mostly because of the comp time issue. Um where the administrative system is spending a lot of time uh within their wetlands meetings and the minutes and then taking comp time. This will uh hopefully reduce that substantially.
So, is this the year we're gonna give Kevin everything he asked for? Don't let him hear it.
Although I do have a note that says reduce if needed.
Hey, if we need to play with something, that's an area we can go to.
Next is uh economics development. Um. Matt and I discussed the ten thousand dollar economic development plan uh that Sherry spoke about. Um could be uh paid by ARPA funding.
Yep.
It was an appropriate ARPA fund um expense, so we reduced that by that ten thousand dollars. Questions on EDC? Nope, we're moving on.
Yeah, at least we got something this year for us.
Yeah, she really stopped you dead when she made that presentation.
Well, you know, I I was just gonna multiply the years. The problem is, we are almost covered.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah. Alright, next is historic district commission, looking for fifty dollars more. Which is um from their board of commission secretary. Line item. Any questions on historic district? Library. Um. Primarily salaries uh and utilities in the library.
And he had some building maintenance, right?
And building, yes.
That's, that's where, that's where, that's where you.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, something that just occurred to me, that just occurred to me yesterday, Dave Gordon, meant to talk to you. Um, the energy contract that we're still in actually goes through November, but that's. Right, for delivery charges.
Correct.
Engine.
Right.
So which are the ones that are uh experiencing the uh extreme increases? Is it both?
No, it's the uh, it's the production.
So.
So.
We could be.
We are, we were somewhat protected through November, right? Because of that technical violence, some of these contracts expire, so it's time, uh and I actually reached out to the folks that.
It's a number of days if you do make a change.
What's that?
Base number of days we do actually make a change.
Yeah, well, we uh we've used consortium, uh CCM consortium organizations, Titan Energy. Um and we're currently in the middle of, not middle, but towards the end of a three-year contract that we entered into. Um and we'll more than likely be using Titan to go back out for an RFP. In fact, uh they're suggesting, uh based on my conversation with them yesterday. They're suggesting that uh we ought to start pulling stuff together uh now and start testing the market, so. So, my my point is, we've been anticipating significant increases in utility costs, right?
Overall.
Overall, it may not be uh as significant as we thought. Because of the contract that we have in place, which gets us through five months of fiscal year.
Keep in mind, I was quoted up to sixty percent increases and I took the half, so.
So we're back.
If I had a crystal ball, I'd give you a better number, but that's. That's, that's what we've done. Any, any questions on library? Next is um the golf course. Uh so here we realized that um no adjustment for electricity was, was made. Um, so I I added the thirty-five percent on the, on just the elec- electricity line item, bringing that from sixty-seven thousand dollars.
The water. Goes, it's going up, three thousand dollars, although it's less than the actual.
Yeah, it's, and that's based on usage, not any pricing increase.
Right, we asked that. He said it was because of the.
It was.
Last summer was, you know, ninety-degree days for like sixty days, but so he's basing it on last summer, but that was.
And ground maintenance went up considerably as well.
And that was due to pricing. Material costs.
Yeah, their revenue budget's going up. If they anticipated, well, by thirty-four thousand five hundred, so great, covering some of the costs.
Covering all of it.
Covering all of it.
Yeah. We're up thirty-two on the expense side.
Are also, we've also increased or increasing a administrative assistant position. We're increasing a clubhouse position to an administrative assistant.
Right, exactly. Only department head that doesn't have any. The housing place was in great shape. Uh it seems like it's running well. Seems like the COVID surge is sustainable.
Next is police. Um, so the change we made here, um they requested uh two SROs. Um, and so we reduced that and then we uh had to also re- uh reflect a change in the board of ed offset. So Mitch, if you wanna go over that?
Well, just that, um, you know, we should put in for two SROs for a approximate ninety thousand dollar um salary for each. With an approximate forty-five thousand dollar uh reimbursement from the board of ed, half that salary amount. Uh so by removing one of the officer, new officer positions, you know, we we reduced by about forty-five thousand. The net there's about forty-five thousand. Um, so back to my letter to you. This is a add for one new position now at ninety thousand for the position, forty-five thousand hour offset. That's, that's expected from the board of ed. I don't know if that's been put in writing yet.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in writing, but uh the uh the agreement that Dr. Freeman uh Butch and myself put together. Uh some time ago, uh as we determined that it was originally two. Uh this is largely because of the number of requests for increased security based on what's happening in our world. A lot of our neighbors are actually doing something similar to what we're doing. Um, just the uh, the schools are gonna be adding. Not security guards, but monitors, uh school monitors which act effectively like that. Um, they did not want, you know, typically, Paul did not want armed officers in the school all the time. Uh but the SRO is 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 the exception, so uh then they called on the police department. So this is, Dr. Freeman is uh is fine with doing one this year, seeing how it goes and possibly another one next year. The thought was, we had, you know, uh we'd have one for the uh the high school, one for the middle school, and one for the elementary school. Headed around, but um we're back down to just the one. And I think there's a, I don't know if everybody got a copy of the board of ed budget, but I think that.
They seem to have forty in there, forty thousand.
Yeah.
Gone up from twenty last year to forty this year.
Yep.
Maybe it's another piece somewhere else. So, did you, the salary of this person is not ninety thousand dollars?
Salary is ninety thousand dollars. There'll be an offset of forty-five thousand dollars from the board of ed.
So if this is a police officer coming in at ninety thousand dollars?
Yep.
Is that what police officers come in at in Gilford now?
Well, i- it's what a police officer comes in at as a, as an experienced police officer, a grade A. Uh, police officer would be a ninety thousand dollars, so.
So when they come out of the academy and they're high.
No, when they come out of the academy, we're looking more in the uh seventy-five thousand dollar range. I don't have the exact number here. But I think, you know, Butch has said to you that he's looking for, you know, as best as they can about laterals. When they bring in a lateral, they'll bring somebody in at that rate. Um, of course, this is a budgeted amount. So obviously, if he ends up hiring a new officer to be an SRO, would be at the lower rate.
Um, probably not gonna stick a a new officer into an SRO role. They don't have the experience. They don't have the the polish. Um, this, this is, is traditionally, SRO is going to, not a senior, but someone who is seasoned.
Now, you said the other town, other towns are doing this as well. They all doing this through the police department or they, or some of the others.
Some of them, some of them are doing. They're hiring security guards, outside security firms to do that. Uh, there are some of the super tenants who are loath to, to, to hire that. You know, that type of way, so, but they are, they're hiring someone that, you know, maybe they're calling it something different. But it effectively is the same thing, but it is not going to be an armed uh security agent in each one of the schools. There's probably some documentation in the uh, what is that, uh budget request?
Any other questions on the police asset?
Increases largely around the SRO position, right?
Well, that's forty-five out of the three sixty. You've got a lot of increases.
Replacement salaries.
Replacement salaries up sixty thousand.
And is that a function of they're just still short-handed?
I think, I think they do. They, they do.
They have a couple people out.
Yep. They do a three-year average, don't they? Isn't that the way they do it?
Yeah. You did that here, did you?
So that's, yeah, the three-year average I have is about four hundred and two. They have a four thirty-four, most likely adjusted for salaries or increases.
Currently, uh significantly over fifty percent of the fiscal twenty-three.
Yep.
Uh, approved budget.
And the civilian salary bump is sort of the, consistent with the admin changes everywhere else? Yeah, um.
Seems kind of else. No, no overtime, but just general wage increases.
Wage increase, yeah.
I mean, it's like three thousand.
Mitch, Mitch is reviewing his details.
It's um, it's that uh pretty much so. You've got um. There's also added to that in the last contract, there's a sick incentive pay for civilians now. Um, for for not taking sick time. We would, we would actually pay them out uh for partial part of that. Which is a uh increase in the civilian, police civilian for uh twenty-six hundred hours as part of that total. Um, the thinking there is that when a dispatcher calls out, they have to replace. Uh usually by an officer who sometimes, sometimes is called in. This is a bigger issue in communications, but they're all in the same union. And this was a uh, seemed to be a a hopeful uh savings, especially in communication with their twenty-four seven. Every time somebody is out, we have to replace, so there was a sick incentive uh put into the that contract. Which is now effective. That's, that's, that's part of it. Um, you're seeing uh increase there. And there's also an increase, it's a little bit more than the usual contracts, because you've got one of your dispatchers who's fairly new. Moving up on the steps, uh made a more substantial increase for that one person. But nothing really out of the ordinary, but the the sick, I wanted to bring up the sick incentive, so you know.
So Mitch, how many uh individuals total?
Okay, how many?
How many individuals total under seven?
Individuals.
How is it?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven.
And how many of those are dispatchers?
Three.
Three.
You've got the administrative assistant, you've got two police records administrators, you've got the municipal animal control officer. And three dispatchers all in the civilian line.
So. That's obviously one of the reasons why uh the uh replacement salaries are part of where they are, where they are. Please, you've got three individuals covered twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Weekends, vacations, sick time, holidays, right? So we have a built-in uh, you know, need for replacement salaries and that's being filled by uh by officers. As opposed to hiring a a fourth individual.
The other thing I missed, I'm sorry, Lou, was the holiday pay, which is also added into the contract with the dispatchers. That's, that's, that's actually the big thing here. It's uh, sorry, I missed that. It's uh eighty-six, eighty-seven hundred dollars of holiday pay.
I've removed fire. I I do have one change under replacement salaries. I did highlight. Um, so we had budgeted a thirty thousand dollar offset. For COVID sick salary replacements. And and we track replacements specifically for COVID, if you're out sick with COVID. Um, and so in the current year, um actually in in twenty-two, the. And so in the current year, actually in in twenty-two, the actual COVID sick was sixty thousand dollars. And we're actually tracking for that again this year. So I had Mitch increase the COVID offset from thirty to sixty because that was a more.
Increase to fifty?
Fifty, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, my notes. It was sixteen. We we did it to fifty. Yeah, we had it thirty.
So Lou, before you ask, the the replacement salary is there were a fourteen and a half percent increase with the fifty thousand dollar offset for. Mary Jane just explained, bring it down to twelve point eight.
Okay.
Fire? We have salary increases. Telephone. Budget.
Just a quick note on that, that that is obviously grown somewhat since the past several years. To that effect, there is CCM partner that does telephony bill evaluation to benchmark it against industry norms and also accuracy. Percentage of anything they find, so. I referred that to Mike Show who already is in contact with the individual, so just to get a handle on that. It's, yeah, all forms.
Just jumping back to fire permit. It looks like we're doing better on not having those overages in the lines that we questioned last year. I forget whether it was the replacement line, part-time line.
Well, yep, replacement line was was the biggie. Of course, we have a budget of eight seventy-one and we're already at six thirty. So. Right. We tend to, you know, when we go back and ask the fire department to find us some savings, you know, we typically hit that line. And, you know, we really have to look at that line and budget what it really should be instead of every year bringing it down. Just my personal opinion. And, you know, instead of hitting that line item and, you know, I I know they try to keep it lower, but. Then we run into situations like last year and that wasn't good for anybody.
You know, we've had this question I ask the chief every time. Why are we so high? Why are you so high, you know, as a percentage of your salaries as opposed to the police department? Percentage of their overall salaries and their regular salary at this minimum staffing level, all right? You know, those are guidelines. So, you know, again, so this is my, you know, apple pie, you know, the American flag. How do you, how do you say that? But, you know, the police department is able to 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 downsize shifts occasionally. They don't like to advertise that, but that's one of the things that we, they they stick to that minimum staffing level, no matter what.
Can we snag a break in a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
We're getting to this?
We end up, uh, communications. Are we good with?
Yeah, I jumped back to fire. I'm sorry. Did we finish communication here?
Quick break.
Hey, we're ready to go back?
Okay, so we finished communications. We're on to public works, which I think we've already, unless there are any additional questions. I'm good. Okay.
The only, the only thing I was thinking about was possibly funding this, what is really a one-time kind of event? This materials management to clean up the. Clean up the 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 stump dump, right? I think they've indicated that would be three, four-year process, right? So let me, let me check back with it and see whether or not there would be any ongoing costs once they got through the anticipated cleanup.
Well, he did say be small though. It it would be a small maintenance once it's cleaned up.
Because that might be a decent use of our funds.
Use the ARPA funds with a big amount?
And basically allocate it over the next four years, over the next four years. Take a look at that. Eventually those funds are going to run out.
Is Sarah?
Well, I'd use the money. There's somebody on the backend to the state.
Yes, we do have to report our our usage. We did choose the standard allowance. So it allows us to have a more broad usage of it, but I still have to report generally what we use it for. So the the difference between the standard allowance and the full reporting is I can say we've spent three hundred thousand dollars on recreational improvements to whatever.
Yeah.
Where at, that's what we can do now as opposed to before the allowance, I would have had to say four thousand dollars was sent to ABC Company, fifty dollars was sent to XYZ. So yes, we still have to report. Yes, we still have to use it appropriately, but our reporting is is much, I'll say simplified. Streamlined. That's a, that's a better word for it, but we still, every, every decision we make, we always think about what those rules are. And and we follow them. But so yes, there's reporting and yes, it is audited by our auditors too. They they review that extensively.
Okay, so to that end, with the ARPA funds, Mary Jane recently provided me with an updated spreadsheet.
Send that to everybody.
Did everybody get it?
Everybody got it.
Make sure everybody got it. Looks like we still have about two point six, two point five, two point six million dollars allocated.
We had a couple of small things that we had allocated. I didn't have on there yet, but certainly not, you know. And then once, you know, all of these that we're saying ARPA will eventually, if needed, be added to that as well, so.
That reminds me, we need to start talking to folks like Rick and other folks, particularly Rick, about spending it. It has to be spent by twenty twenty-six. So I don't like to miss, yeah.
Well, he certainly had a request for it. He's sick, so he shouldn't have any.
He used to call me every day, so. Call every day with something he'd think. All right. We done with public works then?
Yes.
We'll consider some ARPA funding for that. So we're on town properties. The only adjustment we made when Steve was here, he he did mention that the streetlight maintenance could probably be reduced. So I reduced it based on a three-year average, bringing it from twelve thousand down to nine point four. So the adjustment that that I made. Yeah, it kills us. Every year. Now we have all of the Mulberry fire hydrants are all accounted for. Should be good to go. Is that the main reason for the increase or is it rates?
No, it's rates.
It was rates, yes.
That had an impactful question.
Any other questions on town properties?
So the, so the good news is for everybody at Mulberry Point, right, their insurance will come down because of the fire hydrants. But their property taxes go up because of.
Oh, my goodness.
But everybody, but everybody's paying taxes because of, not just theirs.
Right. We provide water.
Okay.
Health Department?
Let me, let me shoot that one.
Go ahead.
All right, so health department, a little different on the increases here because three of the people involved with the WPCA work are exempt employees. So we don't have the luxury of extra time, overtime, et cetera. So what we've done is we've decided, at least in discussion with with Sonia and with Matt, myself, is to recommend that there be increases given to the three exempt employees, that being the health director, the sanitaryian, the environmental health technician. So their salaries would actually increase as a salary, as salaried employees. That's under the full-time positions. We still leave the administrative assistant as a thirty-five hour a week position with five hours of overtime. That five hours will probably also be dedicated to, in this case, WPCA. Then the meantime, there's a request in there for two part-time employees. One is just a health assistant. That's, you know, I think it's mostly a summer help situation that she's looking for there for ninety-six hundred dollars. And then more importantly, at least at this point, is a WPCA coordinator position at twenty-two hours a week for twenty-six thousand dollars. So there's a lot going on in the health department, needless to say, and a lot going on with the salaries. I've had extensive discussions with Sonia and I think we finally got this one worked out. There's a little bit of a drop in what her original request was based on some of these adjustments that were made. So we were able to drop that about seven thousand dollars, I think.
Up until this time with the WPCA, in the past, how did we, that just was absorbed? Did Dennis somehow manage to do it himself?
No, there was.
It wasn't.
Originally, there was staff. Staff was taken away. And then the work just didn't get done. And we cannot afford to have deep in our, you know, in our, in our, in our, excuse expression. In the target.
No.
They have, they they have, they they, the shoreline as a whole, it's been looked at for sewer avoidance programs. That's what we've been under sewer avoidance program. We have a plan document that's about this that hasn't been updated since two thousand and four. And their focus has largely been on Old Lane, Old Saybrook and Westbrook and Clint to some degree, right? They're all, they're all, I think, you know, neighborhood, the neighborhood treatment plants, that's where they're, that's what they're looking to do. And it's, it's just a matter of time before Deep starts to focus back on Madison and Guilford. So we've got to, we've got to get our act together.
With this renewed effort, we will get ourselves.
I I think so. But it's, Sonia's very efficient and very effective at what she does. And she's been, she's been dealing with this sewer avoidance thing.
She has experimented with this.
Career. It's basically been, she worked, she was a sanitaryian in Westbrook, Westbrook, for Noel Bishop, actually. She's got first-hand experience with this kind of stuff. And, you know, it's, it's just getting in compliance with what we told Deep we were going to do.
Yeah. As long as, as long as COVID stays at bay, she'll be able to put her efforts towards this. Yeah, that is.
I'm sorry, this is probably repeating what people have already said, but the actual additional cost related to this specific issue is the twenty-six thousand dollar coordinator and the overtime hours. Is that fair to say or is it all, is it more than that?
Yeah, it's, it's.
For the WPCA part of it? So the WPCA part of it, there's going to be an adjustment to Sonia's salary, an adjustment to the sanitaryian's salary, an adjustment to the health technician's salary. So let's push those up. Then there's going to be an adjustment also in overtime or extra time for the administrative assistant, five hours a week. So that's basically five hours a week for all, let's say, all four of those. Then she's also putting in for a W, part-time WPCA coordinator, ninety-six hundred dollars.
So it's the whole increase in all the salaries minus whatever contractually happened.
Yeah, yeah.
So will that, so will that let them do it? I mean, if it salary increases to the exempt people, that's not getting more.
Well, the salary was basically, you know, Sonia claiming that it was going to take a lot of additional hours. Some of these hours are being put in already by the sanitaryian and environmental technician as well as Sonia. There's no doubt about that. It was a way of saying, you know, this money should be, you know, allocate is probably the wrong word, but, you know, designated as WPCA work as justification for going above and beyond, but they're already going above and beyond to make it happen.
So are we going to be adjusting the union contract that those positions are forty-hour positions?
Yes.
So.
The two, the two positions, the two positions, the intent, as long as it goes through what you're discussing now, would be to eventually adjust the union contract to save, because the the GEA has exempt employees both considered thirty-five hour week and forty hour week. So this is an easy adjustment to keep their same position from an E thirty-five to an E forty, both of them.
But that's not Sonia's position.
Not Sonia's position, the two, the two GEA positions. Sonia's position, we made an adjustment to her salary.
Does that open up a can of worms with the GSA?
Well, if everybody, the GSA is taking on extra work on WPCA, I guess it would.
Yeah. You have an answer for this.
Good.
Any other questions on the health department? So social services, I don't know if it was, we did hire a new someone to replace Tammy and that is reflected in the salary line at a lower salary. And Tammy said we could reduce education and training. So we did that. So that budget is actually going down mainly because of change in the department.
This is one of those unusual times where we actually have a new hire in place before we do the budget, so we don't get that.
For one week.
A bit of cushion.
Yeah.
And I, she, she's not pushing for any of the thirty-fives to get straight overtime to forty or they're already, they're all already at forty.
No, they're thirty-five.
Changes, no, no requests there, only Town Hall South.
With the Town Hall South.
Just Town Hall South. You'll see those changes.
Not in social services.
Any other questions on social services? Human services, request for a six percent increase.
Let's go back to social.
Oh, sorry.
Utilities was up by five percent. I mean, the five thousand. Although they're, they're, their date actually.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Takes it to twenty-eight hundred, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Human services.
So I'm saying they request is a six percent increase over the current year.
There was some, there was some interesting conversation we had last week. How many, how many, how many places at the Apple do all these organizations get? And then you hear huge push-up by the nonprofits up in Hartford for, for increased funding. You know, each one of these has, has great value to the community, otherwise they would have been put forward by services. Is anybody uncomfortable with anything in here? You know, the V and A is out, which I think is more than appropriate now that they're owned by Young Haven's health system.
Well, Charlie made a good point to me that I had, but so it's really your point, Charles, that you theoretically quote-unquote saved fourteen thousand dollars. But they took that money, I guess, and allocated it to other places, which I probably would have done myself. But but on top of that, it's gone up six percent. You know what I mean? So so they had. If we gave, if we said, okay, keep the fourteen, put it where you think it's best used. I'm usually fighting to keep this budget the way it is and and I'm not necessarily knocking it, but I just thought that was a good point that you brought up, so.
I mean, my, my struggle with it right now is, is because of COVID inflation and everything else, you know. I have to keep my perspective that this is not what's going on now. This is what's going to be going on in a year from now. And I gotta tell you, I, I think, you know, especially with even the drug issue. You know, we're talking about marijuana now. I know we're not supposed to relate that it's really going to affect what's going on in our community, but it is. You know, it it's hard to cut any of these things. Once I get by the philosophical question annually comes up of, you know, why we're determining where taxpayers make donations. Once you get by that, you know, how do you argue with the validity of any of these things? And I I have come to accept their vetting of each one of these individual things. I'm glad the VNA, they, they made the decision now that they're privatized. Do what they have to do. I don't know. I don't know, they don't really become a profit center at this point.
Yeah, they're managed, and, you know, for the record, uh my wife is an employee over the good VNA here in Guilford, a part-time employee. That's, she got tired of retirement, so I need structure in my life. Uh and they've been absorbed into uh. And there's also some concern uh that uh they're gonna change the face of focus of VNA. Uh based on how they, how they get funding. They're largely granting, a lot of programs are grant-funded themselves, so. Uh but anyway, uh they, you know, they've been rolled up. What I'm, what I'm interested in is that they took thirteen of that fourteen thousand. And moved it to BH here.
Well, but it also, it's, I'm trying to figure that out. And community health, there's something called Community Health Center that dropped fifteen thousand. So that those two lines are almost opposite each other, so I'm not sure if they're thinking that's the same service. And why, if it is the same service, uh those two are confusing.
Yeah, without getting, without having the backup for each and every one of these, I've kinda accepted in my own mind to let them manage. You know, the money between the different. I, I can. You know, I can make comments plus and minus about any one of them, you know. You want more youth, you want more seniors, you can't do that, so you gotta let them manage.
Right, so the question is, is a gross, is a gross increase in comparable with. Some smaller number, let them figure it out.
Yeah, and that, that comes back to my original discussion, you know. Who are we to decide for taxpayers?
I got their presentation up on the screen if there's any particular line item we wanted to.
I'm not gonna give you the micro bench.
I'm, I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking you to, Charles, I'm just saying that I have it available, if there's any, if there's any you wanna look at.
We can make a decent argument, excuse me, to say, you know, if the overall increase is gonna be two or three percent, there should be two or three percent. That's, that's an argument, or at least they're staying even with the fact.
Yeah, even with inflation or whatever rationalization you wanna use, there's a certain logic to that.
Let's not recall, this isn't the last bite of the apple, or the finance, the, the opportunity to take a piece of. Uh and this may be a place we could go to.
Is Life Links Lifeline?
No.
It's, it's a.
It's the drug rehab.
Remember Lifelines used to be in, they dropped out, like insurance company or something.
This is then in and out, that's this organization, Lifelines.
I think it's because they, they had problems getting their application.
Yeah, that's, that's what I try to get. So I, I always felt bad that because of their. You know, lack of administrative skill, uh that they kept missing it. Because I always got the impression they were too busy helping people, that they forgot to do the paperwork.
Can you just tell me what the community health center is and sweep it up and you have it there?
That's right, this is the next one. They, they do it alphabetical? So it's up, right?
That the one? Can you say, can you read it? Want me to read it?
Statewide primary care organization, feel like I'm dabbing in eye test.
Making the same comment they make every year, they're all important, they're all good organizations, and everybody in town should get out there, check, look, and donate money to every single one of them. But I think for us, the, the question is, do they, and it's not even about do they serve Guilford residents, it's, it's, we're, we're the town of Guilford government. Do these organizations provide a governmental function that we're not able to meet for some reason? Or are they duplicating something that we're already doing? I mean, would it make sense for us instead to support more of what youth and family services needs? Or more of what the new Tammy needs, I'm sorry, I can't remember her name. But I, I don't, I don't feel that the group that, that comes up with the allocation goes through the process the same way that I see it. And I don't know, I don't know where I would start, I don't necessarily have any suggestions. I also know, because we did ask the question, if there were any applications, they turned away for some reason, and there were not. So everyone who came forward was given a place, took the fourteen thousand dollar reduction, and they can increase twenty thousand on the, all the other lines. So um. I'm, I'm embarrassed to say anything against any particular organization on here, and I'm not gonna go down that road. But I, I, I like the idea, first of all, not micromanaging, but if we can just, I mean, we're in agreement, that's sort of what this is supposed to serve. Maybe we could try to make that point and say. Your increase is gonna be the same as our total budget increase, and we add it to.
And that's what we've done in the past, we've gone back to them and said, please let us know where that is. I just wanna make a, 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 a point I'm gonna look into. Which is making a good point here, wondering whether or not uh my budgeted numbers match up to the right lines. Cause there was an eighteen to three, and then, so I'm gonna double check on that, but so. I'm gonna, I won't, I won't take the time to do that right now, but I will have that. Specifically for, for Friday, just in case I, it's, because I had to add in new line items and stuff, it's very possible. That um there's a error in, in what line items. Yep, yep.
So, to, to your point, now currently the, the budget set presented, which will change based on some of the stuff we do here. It's a three point eight, eight percent, so it turns out to be four percent, right? So if you, if you'd be comfortable, say, uh we'll give you a four percent increase. As opposed to the less than five point nine eight, so.
It's a couple thousand dollars.
It seems silly, I would be, yeah.
I would like to wait, that may happen, but I don't think we need to do it today.
Place to go back to.
Good on that one. Meeting Family Services is next. You know, salaries, utilities, building maintenance.
Good question for you.
Yeah.
Uh we've lost some salary offsets, right? Didn't we lose some of the grant programs?
So, see if I can follow this.
The day grant.
The, the ARPA grant stays, the ARPA grant stays the same, the DCF grant stays the same. We lost the DFC, don't ask me to tell you what these are. The DFC grant disappeared last year, so that's actually gonna come off. There's a JRB grant for six thousand dollars that we, we lost. There's really a six thousand dollar grant that was lost, and whatever the ESC we lost two years ago.
She makes a pretty compelling case for, excuse the pun, caseload, uh and what they're carrying.
It's really all because of the salaries and utility.
And the contracted services are level, essentially.
Those are, those are the outside clinicians, I guess.
That's what that is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of.
I thought, I thought it was telling when she spoke to the fact that uh she's got personnel-wise, she was covered in. During the last two or three years, I was pleasantly surprised. I mean, we put the effort in the past couple of years and it paid off.
I think, I think we had, you know, we had hoped that we'd be revisiting that organization and saying, you know, some of these additional bodies we gave you. Call it back, but this is too early.
And affects your settlement, it works. I think the coordination with the school is important, and uh. I was pleasantly surprised that she felt.
I, I enjoyed the conversation regarding um her collaboration with the police department. Yeah, I thought that was fabulous.
Taking care of the patients, but also, you know, all of the issues going on nationally with the police environment, and be thinking how they react.
I'm sure they appreciate having the resources as well.
Uh so question of revenues. Twenty-two actuals were two hundred and fourteen thousand. A year-to-date is over a hundred, it's a hundred and seven thousand, and we've only budgeted one thirty-five. Why so?
She did talk about that at her presentation, she was just trying to be. Conservative, not knowing where that was gonna go.
I think, even if we split the difference between what she has asked for and what the twenty-two actuals were. Because we're making spending decisions based on the fact that we anticipate service levels remaining where they are. Uh why can't we uh do the same for the revenues? She thinks something's uh gonna dramatically change.
Bring that up some, okay, we'll look into that, I'll look at that.
I'd be interested to know what percentage of that revenue is, if they have this data, Husky versus private insurance.
Interesting reply to the question, be an interesting commentary on our demographics.
Next is parking wreck.
So parking wreck, if you, off my letter for the discussion that Rick gave you. He's increasing one full-time position uh for the assistant cook, but he's also at the same time eliminating. Kitchen assistant position at a part-time. So it's basically taking a person's currently a twenty-four hour week position to forty hours a week. Uh but we have to do that, we have to move, add to full-time the lead from part-time.
I had a, I think he shared with you Rick's uh conversation, I had some questions about the senior program that I. And, you know, the evolution of the conversation was that. He did not, he, he would not be in favor of developing a, another department or a sub-department or anything like that. He, the growth of the senior program, uh I think we do a lot, but the, the dollars and cents of it all are, and it's remarkable, as I thought they might be. Number one, and number two, he would not support developing a separate department, he said some other communities do it. Uh and, and I'm, I'm fine with that discussion, I, I was. Not concerned, but it seemed to me that, you know, we were doing so much, it isn't under control, and you know. Seniors are, are going away, if anything.
There are more of us.
Right, uh so anyway, that, that's where that discussion went, I mean, I think we're doing a lot, I think, you know, we should continue to do a lot. Uh but he would not be in favor of the separation. He seems to think that the uh. Not only the administrative and the dollars and cents benefits of, of keeping the departments together. But he said the social aspect probably was even more valuable. I mean, the interaction uh with the seniors, seeing the different programs from through the community center and that type of thing. It really uh. You, you really thought the idea of a community center versus a, a senior center. Recreation center, just, community center was better.
Yeah, I, I think, I think he's done a remarkable job of blending those worlds together, and, and there's some great economies of scale, not necessarily financial, but. Social and support, that, you know. The numbers he put together probably didn't accurately reflect. How much, how much, how much all of the staff over there is really spending on, on seniors. As opposed to, you know, the, all the social interactions in that building, was it, you know, it's not, all, all day long. Rarely anybody else.
I mean, the, the other concern I had is that, you know, the cook, you know, we're, we're talking about the help in, in the, in the kitchen area. You know, I, I had some struggle, struggles with the philosophical belief that, you know. The kitchen had to support other programs, you know. Were we trying to develop a commercial enterprise in the kitchen to pay for other programs that had nothing to do with that part? But it just seems to be working. I, I expressed to Rick, I said, well, you know, you, you've got a succession issue ahead of you. Because, okay, you know, those personnel aren't gonna last forever, and if you develop uh this system. That, that, this model that, that's working, and I agree with Rick at this point in time, it is working. Uh if he doesn't prepare for a succession situation, he's gonna have a big issue on his hands at some point in time. So that's why I, I would generally support, you know, his plans over there. Uh but I do think it's things that we have to keep an eye on.
Yeah, but he's, he and I have had those discussions, and, by the way, I also have to be concerned about succession planning. Cause Rick is not a spring chicken either, he's probably eligible for retirement at this point, if I'm not mistaken. And I know he's, I know he's eligible for some federal programs too. Um so, you know, but Rick has some extending waiting circumstances, Rick is probably not gonna retire, uh till. Right, uh but Terry, Terry also has that same level of commitment and passion. I know her husband's retired. He basically takes care of the animals and horses, right? But uh when she goes, that's a huge hole, just like trying to back Bill Tenny. Uh but I think he's done a really, Rick's done a good job in it, and it's in that side, cause he's basically got three, I would call them silos, because they do interact pretty well together. Between the recreation side, which is Ellen Clow, basically is the supervisor on that side. Uh we've got uh Terry manages a couple of folks, uh Patty in particular, right?
Well, Terry also man-manages uh the kitchen.
The kitchen, the kitchen. In the kitchen, and you got Todd Rake, who manages the, the, the building, supervises the part-time custodian, so.
He's really got.
The other silo there probably comes in that third silo, Fields. If there's any silo, I mean, and that's why I had the discussion with Rick, I, I wanted, first of all, reassure him that I, I wasn't. In any way uh seeking to minimize the, any of the programs. I think they're all valuable services to the community, I just wanna make sure that management. Planning the best way possible, and you hit it on the head, I mean, there's a lot going on over there. I learned the lesson personally. Back when I was first elected to this position, with the three stores. I mean, it was shocking how fast.
I, he may have addressed this presentation, and I may have forgotten it, but on the senior meals subsidy. So far this year, he's spent only six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of the um. Amount that was allocated, which is twenty-seven thousand, right? And he's jumping it to forty-five, and I know some of it was addressing food costs.
So, um so the sixty-seven fifty so far is of funding we've applied from ARPA. That, that, um that we, we do every month, but the, the full subsidy, we re, we really don't know until the end of the year. We, we subsidize once we need to, that, that full amount, so that'll bump up. And it'll be that and, and more.
So it's gonna, I mean, the last three-year average was twenty-five thousand, and, but.
We use ARPA money. Yeah, we're applying, the sixty-seven is low because we're applying ARPA money to it. Um but we've applied ARPA money for a couple of years now.
So this forty-five is forty-five reflects even with ARPA money, ARPA money, we need to have forty-five?
Yes.
Anybody priced up eggs lately? That's that.
That's the longer daylight hours, I didn't realize, it's a calculation of daylight hour.
Yeah, we're pretty close to that moment where the light, light comes. We're close.
Well, we just lost four hundred thousand chickens in. Two hundred thousand, I don't know, more. Just heard a statistic that Connecticut, we just heard this, that Connecticut has the most chickens of all the fifty states.
That was the worst one, like, in the country. And that was the biggest one, like, in the country?
Yeah. Yes.
That doesn't feel right.
What about? And that, and that area, that, that area was also the largest mushroom growing area in the country as well, Franklin and that area.
The Kennedy Square would be chiming in on that.
China mushrooms.
Not suicide.
Not suicide.
Matt, Matt's gonna have to leave us.
If you guys, if you guys wanna go through it.
Well, we're, we're, we're pretty good, we have employee benefits, cap, capital, I'd like to.
Say that.
Yeah, say, we wanna say that, because we have to really talk about bonding as well as, as capital. Um, and then debt, there's, there's really, there's not much you can tell, tell me to do differently on debt.
Can I go back to parking wreck?
Of course.
Would you be able to send us something current on the program, please?
Yes.
Yes.
The revenue special.
Okay.
Yeah, because those are healthy again, we had, we had, several years ago, we raised, we, we gave them additional salary to support, and we were offsetting it with programs, so let's see if we're at a point where we.
I had discussions with Rick, I, I know he's proposing, um, some significant uses of it with, so, not only will I try to provide you where we are current, um, also a list of maybe the potential uses that the Department of Emergency Mission.
And, and, and I think my logic, still holds, or the logic we knew was at that point is, these program, you know, these programs that we charge folks for, all right, um, our personnel, even though we're hiring a lot of outside people, and these programs are done by outside contractors, recovering the costs associated with managing that process. So I think it's fair to have a piece of the program, uh, revenue, revenues, and or surpluses, go to support the staff that, as opposed to, which is, which is weird, this is a slippery slope, as opposed to, and I hate to use this term, plus slash fund, if they get to use. And I wouldn't use that public.
When they're using the logic of running the kitchen to support program, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, I think the conversation about the breakfast, the breakfast of supporting the other lunches.
Yeah.
It wasn't supporting program, but.
I think, well, five years ago, when I first got involved in this, I think that program fund was six hundred thousand dollars, and we, we made some inroads in that.
Yes, we did.
We cut, and I cut, we used, and then COVID came, so that, their revenue dropped, but I think.
We gave them a revenue offset.
Right.
We gave them a fifty thousand from COVID.
I think it's time that, I, I, I think I did ask that question, but it was, I don't wanna say glossed over, but I'd like to see the specifics, you know.
I mean, they've used it to buy vehicles, they've, to buy a binder, ceiling.
Yeah.
Yep, there was all sorts of appropriate, right?
Yeah, it's just, but, it's just time to put our eyes on it.
So, um, so just as a way of background, or thinking, I don't know if everybody's seen the Board of Ed budget, but their current numbers, the superintendent's budget to the Board of Ed was a four point seventy percent increase. But it's, it's highly consistent with what I've seen in the papers for Boards of Education throughout the region and the state. The numbers are crazy, I don't know, so, anyway, uh, I'm sorry to have to end this so abruptly.
Purely anecdotally, go to the order. We were up at the, uh, if you haven't done it yet, the, the scouts, speaking partner wreck, the scout forces, dynamite. This is dynamite, so much fun.
Thanks, donations you received to support that.
Oh, yeah, mate, and, and, if you see the championship positions, it's ridiculous, the regular ones are hard enough. The championship boys can't even see.
Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Oh, my.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Go back to Friday.